Hey, there we go.
Oh dude.
Hey guys.
Okay.
Hello.
Cool.
Okay, um, in front of you is the invoice with detailed explanation of the work that has already been done to our current paver. But it was ready to go when we were loading her on the trailer last week, when we noticed that the street would not stay up. And this mechanism failing would not allow us to correctly pave correctly because there's no constant down pressure on the street. So we took it out for a short wedge run and during the operation, the lift valve body failed. This is a part that is no longer made in the United States and there is no lead time on when we would be able to get that part from overseas. As of right now, our paving operations have stopped. We can no longer move forward with our current paver. The paver is a two thousand four and it was purchased, I believe in two thousand twelve ish.
But it was used, right?
Yes, it was used when we purchased it. And over the years, every year, we put money into it. Um, and so also in front of you is the quote for the new great paver through Sourcewell. Sourcewell is the um. Program that we're with where it satisfies all of the public purchasing requirements. The paper is the only paper that we could find currently available. We have also checked in at rentals, but have not received any response from members. I'm asking the board commissioners to approve this quote based on our need to continue improvements throughout the county as well as. For approval for the check to be written today or tomorrow, so we can get this piece of equipment delivered tomorrow or by Wednesday at the latest. I think I would rather keep the old paper and offer it to the public in a public auction or even on a municipal auction site. That has served government entities, but that's completely up to you. I know you've talked about that before. Um, I'm asking the council to approve the use of fund one one seven three to make this purchase. Not asking for money, just asking to use the the balance of this fund, which is two point four million dollars. I've already contacted the state board of accounts to make sure this would be approved, purchased out of this fund since it is the restricted fund.
So they don't change their mind after the fact?
Yeah. And they were okay with it?
Yeah. Um, but while I have all your wonderful faces here. I would also like to talk about the aerial truck quote, um, which you also have in front of you. I brought this up at the last board commissioners meeting during the budget workshop. Our current. Aerial lift truck is a nineteen ninety two and uses cabling systems. Um, this year alone, we have had over two hundred fifty dispatched trees called, so that's just dispatch, not what we pick up on our own or what the public calls in. Been very excessive. Uh, we've been doing more tree work than ever. Didn't we ever have in the past? This is a piece of equipment we need in order to keep our operations going and the current aerial lift is no longer safe to operate and this is something. Anybody that wants to come out and see the papers, see the aerial lift, please do.
I've seen the aerial implementation of. Think they were changing out the flag and I'm trying to pay it on the right.
Um.
Um, the latest set.
I would prefer that an LTM tells Catholic aerial truck with a material handler and one set of outriggers and the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Um, because the one is one sixty five that I provided, which doesn't have outriggers and the other one has outriggers.
Have you and Brock, let's go.
It looked like been there and visited. The lead time on that one is not till the spring of twenty twenty five, first first quarter.
Have we look at used ones?
These are used, Dave.
Two hundred thousand for a used truck? Wow, okay.
Those are, those are new trucks. We haven't, I have not. Tried to find a used truck because we're just, you know, we keep buying used. We're just gonna be back in the same position in another five years. Me coming to you asking for more equipment.
Well, I I would agree with a paver. I'm only asking that because a bucket truck, even two hundred fifty calls is not a lot compared, a lot of use compared to using the paper. Like straight, you know, day after day, but I was just curious. Seemed like a lot of money to me.
I reviewed the LRS budget, still saving money for a single axle that um, you've already approved for the beginning of next year. I have about fifty thousand dollars, maybe seventy five thousand I can put towards that purchased. Uh, I just need your help with the rest. Um, in this case, I would suggest the seed it uh, seed it has a balance over four million dollars or ARPA funds. You guys still have about one point four million that you still need to appropriate by the end of the year, um, but this does not include around eight hundred thousand dollars to put toward payroll in twenty twenty five. If that's still what you wanted to do.
I would, I thought, I'm pretty sure we're. We've got there, uh, if not formally allocated.
Yeah.
I just.
Planed, yeah. So I'll need to formalize that within the next.
Did you?
Two, three months.
Did you? Do additional in the last like thirty to forty five days? Because when I did the ARPA reporting right before I left, you still had one point four million.
They had all that money. I mean, yeah. Like he says, these hundreds for.
Yeah, yeah.
Pushing towards.
Since I paid back the ARPA fund two hundred thousand dollars, so that's probably where.
That's where the.
Yeah. I got, I I could definitely do fifty for sure. Um, and then just depending on the rest of the year.
So. But with the paper, you need an additional appropriation from the council then?
Yes, but I would rather not trade it in. I'd rather keep the old paper.
I would think, well, I think putting it up on Go deals. True, because we still have Go deals account, correct? That might be the. The way.
Are they, are they still making? So maybe you pay the seven hundred dollars.
For delivery?
For the repairs that didn't work.
Um, yes, yeah, that's already been paid.
So this is, this has been taken care of.
That's already been taken care of. I just wanted to show you what we put into.
What kind of uh? Warrantiers guarantee comes with this brand new paper, right?
Brand new paper.
And it comes with a service contract or something, I I guess, I might be. Okay, well, I guess what I'm asking is we're providing a brand new paper. And it should come with some type of guarantee, warranty, service contract that if two months from now. Something goes majorly wrong.
I just thought all the details.
Good, I I'd like to know the detail.
I think that rather, no, you step up real quick.
Can I make a comment down here? First of all, I'd like to thank Michaeline for for stepping up and and taking the auditor's job again. We were supposed to be retired. Um, what is the life expectancy of this piece of machinery? And I could probably remind me, did we buy a paper? Or was that after you left?
Cause after I left.
And is that the same paper we're dealing with today that's twenty five?
No. Is it from two thousand four?
Yeah, yeah.
Probably.
Two thousand four. Twenty years was that? We had, we, well, if it was a new one, we bought it. No, two thousand four. So I I'm asking Rachel, what's the life expectancy of this? Could we look at it for twenty five years?
I would say a good twenty. I was gonna say twenty.
So we're looking at a, at a, a little over a fourteen, thirteen, fourteen thousand dollar a year investment. Is that correct?
Something like that, right?
Yeah, but I would like to know what kind of warranty.
I have a question too. It says twelve thousand dollars trade in. Uh, you're thinking of doing an auction. How much more would, do you think?
I don't know how much more it would bring in, um. If any more, I'm not, I'm not, auctions are, some sometimes the equipment, like the last auction that we had, we had some hot boxes that went from eight thousand dollars and I would never thought they went that much.
So you're, the reason why you don't want to trade it in because we get more than twelve thousand and we're kind of open around twenty grand. And what we're hoping for a trade or a sale.
Yeah, that might not happen, but.
Right, I understand.
Yeah.
So then it's gonna be two hundred fifty seven thousand.
And I can cover that all with one one seven three. I'm not asking you to find money. Just asking you to use them.
But you can't pay for the um.
Yeah, because it's not, yeah. Otherwise I would.
Yeah.
But that's where I want the LRS budget and try to pull as much money as I could with there. And since it's not coming until the aerial lift, since it won't be going until the first quarter of twenty five, I might be able to put seventy five thousand into that.
Restricted fine. Which is more useful.
And I kind of have no.
So this thing's out of the way.
Listen, I'd be, I know all those trucks kind of, kind of with.
We do. Pay that.
But. I mean, I, I. The financing, I'd rather just purchase.
To make sure they're not going up.
No.
Twenty, twenty miles.
So we go with the paper, Todd, the commissioner in favor of, now it's up to you guys on the.
Can I ask a question? Um, so additional coverage doesn't have to be advertised as a paper.
So, um, even though they may, even though they're, they just proved this is a year ahead of before the end of the year, you still have to put it in as an additional.
Yeah. It's still working.
I think so.
Yeah, but like this is for the paper itself.
No, no material in.
I'm really sulking.
This is for the paint, right? Yeah, that's what I said.
You guys make a motion to approve it?
Yeah, I make the motion to approve the purchase of the paper for.
Um. Two fifty seven. Four seventy eight, right? Yeah. That's two forty five plus twelve. Yeah.
Two fifty seven, four seventy eight.
Yeah, I'll make that motion for the amount as stated.
You also would for a check to be written for your time.
Today. Yeah, to be paid from eleven seventy three. Today.
And then I would suggest still putting in their next regular claims um, role, so it can just be.
So it's going to be good for another.
So you second that?
My fifth, yeah. It's probably thirty days. Right, well, once we're, we're going through, yeah, that's something to pay, say, if I get on the twenty fifth, so it's probably good thirty days, Paul.
Brock, did you, um, when you were looking for aerial lifts, did you see any used ones?
I. I mean, I, I don't know, out there, you got all your. Nipco, I don't see. I won't thank you for buying.
Well, that's, that's my concern is. Given the used market these days. You know, is there enough of a discount on used to make up for the maintenance? Cause there will be additional maintenance costs. On buying any used equipment.
Oh, you still have money left.
As much as I.
Um.
The safety factor and.
Yes, I would have the money left.
Yeah.
It should be.
Cause he's.
Oh, I thought so.
Like the.
No.
The mower horn was forty five.
Nothing, nothing. Nothing, nothing.
For the track.
Yeah.
I don't think we need something that fancy.
Right. Let's do.
Do you agree with? To go hang on that one?
No, I mean, twelve thousands, twelve thousand is not a lot of money.
No, that's.
I know, you're right, but we haven't done the auction thing and I'll tell you this, the last auction we had, the sheriff's department put over forty some thousand dollars back into our. I mean, I'm just, I'm not saying, I don't know for sure. I'm no paper guy, right? I mean, but.
Well, I think that's reasonable.
Okay, and just because that went out of group.
Is in regards, in regards to the paper, commissioners, they have approved. The two fifty seven, four seventy eight out of eleven seventy three, they're all for it. So it's up to the council if we decide to appropriate the line. So do we have a motion to that fact?
I'll make that motion.
I just got it. Have a second?
I'll second that.
Any, any discussion on it? In discussion?
Um, mine's, I would just like to see. Proper maintenance uh, records and schedules be kept up to date on it. That way, if there is a problem, you can say, well, you know, and I don't know what type of service the, that type of machine requires. But have it. It's coming in the brand new, brand new machine and have good clean maintenance records and schedules kept on the, on the.
Operated properly so we don't void the warranty.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly. That's what I was still.
I noticed there, that one John Deere is out with the, John Deere getting a new transmission put in it.
Um, some. Shifter from drive, they were neutral. Haven't had time trying to figure it out. Exactly what it is, it's, what's good, they're righteous. I've seen it out there.
Those John Deere tractors have been nightmares.
Look, it hadn't been abused.
The brand new one, the brand new tractor has been a nightmare this year.
Was that a pretty new machine?
It was a brand new machine and it's going down every other week.
There you go.
All right, in reference to the um.
Can I stop you? So it's a one year, thousand hour warranty, but they're putting in some extended warranties for us as well.
For this price?
Yes.
All right, in regards to paper, um, we have a motion from Kay and a second from Tony to approve the two hundred fifty seven, four seventy eight of fund eleven seventy three. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, did Dave?
Dave.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay.
All right, there's that. The next thing, I want you guys now, what do you think about this bucket truck?
Yeah.
I don't want you on you.
Okay.
You know, three quotes and if you and Brock got time running, look at, or call me and I'll go look at.
Who's got?
Uh, hey, Don, Don, uh, Todd, could I just, cause you know, the thing is, I want everybody to be safe, cause first of all, now that it's been mentioned in public meeting that. What we have is not safe. We obviously have to be conscious of that liability wise. Um, I thought, I thought it passed its last inspection, but.
It just causes concern seeing in the operation from of the untrained eye that I have.
And this one we got, Dave, or the one that Rachel was talking about, we can't get till spring anyhow.
Yeah, so, but, right, so that's what I was gonna say too, was availability. But I'm just throwing it out there, fire departments are buying used fire trucks now, like hydraulics can be recertified and. A, a truck that goes out two hundred fifty times, I, I, I'm just, I'm just playing both sides of it because that's my job as a council person. Is that if it's even going out for two hundred fifty calls, if it's a couple miles per call, the maintenance on that kind of mile, so it's not mileage that's gonna beat it up. I'm going back to what Howard says, if it's maintenance properly, doesn't mean just that it's automatically gonna fail. The only reason I'm questioning this is that recent, before this, Dan gave us a report about the trucks and wanted to buy more trucks. Rachel recently said she wanted to buy tandems and singles, so this is as much as a single. You know what? I'm just cautioning that that's gonna take out of that. Like if we buy a new one then. It's gonna take out of that rotation. So I think I'm just ca, you know, cautioning the highway department. To take a look at that and s, and see if you're willing to wait longer for one of your other trucks that you're wanting because that kind of money is gonna, you know, is gonna eat up. Eat up money that you want for a single or possibly towards another double or another tandem, just throwing that out there.
So, so that truck actually. It is hydraulic, but it's really not hydraulic. That, that's the thing, Dave, that, that truck is on cable.
No, I, Todd, I understand how the current truck works. I'm talking about the new one will be full hydraulic. I, I was a firefighter for twenty some years, so I'm familiar with how lifting, you know, hydraulic lifting works on these trucks. I'm just saying that. They can be bought used and they can be certified for a long time, just depending on how well they've been taken care of.
And then, I don't know if you heard, that's what Don, that's what Don said.
I, I, I did, I did hear that. I was just giving some support for what Don said.
Yeah. Anyway, enough, no, go ahead. Um, why would you ever consider buying a bucket truck without outriggers? You got somebody up in the air, you get a big gust of wind.
Yeah.
I, I, I just don't farm voice to get here. I would never even consider one, um, I'm not a commissioner.
I'm not asking you to get one without a.
Well, I seen, I, I seen the quotes here, Donnie, that's why I said that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's a shame that the one with two outriggers is a hundred thousand dollars more on the C R N.
Without outrigger.
Yeah. Well. Yeah, yeah, you can see those copass trucks and, and uh. Maybe the frontier.
But, but if you would probably look, look at the load capacity of bucket on a truck without renders, which I don't know if it's probably on here, it's gotta. It's gotta be way, way different.
Yeah, right.
Steve, I understand what you're saying, well, you know, spending this money down, but we have to spend this money down. You need to come out to the highway department and anybody else needs to come out to the highway department. And look at our equipment, look what we're dealing with. We're dealing with equipment that have not, has not been properly maintained for four, at least four or five years. So. With that comes. Okay, you fix one, something's breaking down. You fix one thing in that mechanism and then the next thing breaks and then the next thing breaks because all this stuff has been held together the last four or five years. I can't express enough how bad our equipment is right now. You have no idea what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I, I.
I believe.
I, I, yeah, I can. I wanna make a comment, Rachel, and this is absolutely. Nothing against you because you just took over the position and I'm, and I'm, and I'm sure. You, you, you just. Talked about lack of maintenance. I'm asking you as the new superintendent. To stop that problem and make our mechanics or whoever is in charge, maintain them, please.
Absolutely.
You, you know what I mean? I mean, that's no reflection against you.
Um, I.
I, please, please take it, don't take it that way, but let's make sure that our equipment from now on is properly maintained.
Yep, and we have been, so, um. This year, it's been very difficult with actually fixing the things that need to be fixed on these equipment and then, you know, other things break down in the line. When you fix that first thing.
Yeah.
So I have a um, prep repair budget of a hundred and fifty thousand, I have sixty thousand dollars left and I mean, I still got six more months to go. I'm trying.
Right, I understand. So I'm not telling you, don't get a bucket truck. I'm just asking if you guys will look at it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get some.
Not that I'm trying to, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'll keep those and we'll get three used quotes. We'll go see if we can see that one and then the used ones.
And this is actually one of the areas we're, um. Looking at, remember it might be. Worked while, you know, it's been brought up in fast with some other lesser pieces of equipment, but this is. This is, I think that program. Might be better.
Oh, the D R, D R M.
Yeah.
And I also gave Rachel three. Three sites where, when I was a bridge company, we bought a lot of stuff from those sites. It's like Bruci Brothers, uh, I don't have to give them three of them. But the only problem with that being, I know like when we bought stuff, we, we, it was an auction, we would bid on it and then, you know, we took the check. Whenever.
Right.
So hopefully, you know, we could do the same thing.
All right. Those are sites for used equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So. I mean, if you could go to a, if you could, if you go to the NIPSCO, NIPSCO has their, their, their sale.
Yeah.
You know, and find something that's certified and it's. You know, and find something that's certified and it's got, still got some time left. I mean, I'm sure theirs does its main thing.
I was gonna say, doesn't this do kind of use up equipment like COF does? They don't get rid of it till it's.
They, 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 they were selling last year, I think.
It's just a little, I I understand it's just a little harder with public purchasing, like Sourcewell is the only reason that we can get away with these big purchases.
No, I understand.
But, yeah, I.
No, you're able to maintain a bunch of junk out there because somebody wasn't doing their job for a while. And that's the big issue is they're already maintaining a lot of junk. If you walked out there like I just rode one to help Bob get his CDL, cause I'm a class A carrier. And they're just, I mean, to be straight guys, I hate to say it out in public, our. Our equipment's very lacked behind. It really is. I'm not saying buy any truck, I'm just saying.
And to the, to the. That's maybe the stigma of the whole thing.
Yeah.
You know, the stigma is, you spend all this money. On maintenance equipment and nobody really sees that, but as soon as you buy something new that you don't have to maintain, everybody sees that.
Yeah.
And it's like, oh, you're spending all this money. Well, you don't realize on the backside.
Right.
All the other stuff.
Exactly.
Before that, yeah, I mean. I don't like spending money.
Yeah, we're down to one brush chopper right now. We used to have two brush choppers, but the other brush chopper is done, um.
Rachel. Three years. What, what's, what, what the chassis are?
So the, I don't know specifically what the chassis are, but you don't need a CDL to drive those.
No, but I want to know what engine and stuff, you know, I mean, because in real, nowadays, obviously, I've got three turret trucks and I know like certain trucks you want, certain trucks you don't, I think.
Probably whatever. Maybe whatever the availability is.
Yeah, but like, you know, I see that from.
Yeah.
A guy who's got eleven trucks that, I mean, I've been trying to line mine up to the same engine, same this, that, you know, are good and. And try to line it up to where there are repairs, maintenance.
Yeah.
Instead of having, you know.
Yeah.
A bunch of Maxforce, a bunch of ET.
Have broken up many, many, many different kinds.
And right now, I'll tell you with the DEP and all the products that, you know, that go into DEP, trucks are down so much because of that. They're going to D rate, so you just gotta be careful what you're buying. I don't know what. I think what chassis.
Okay.
We used to try to keep it all pretty standard, so we could keep.
Yeah, right.
We had a, we had a. Set in there, we had a transmission set in there and, and. Hey, um, and I know this is, once again. How can the commissioners put a little pressure on John Deere out there on that, that new tractor?
The, we, the newest tractor we bought for Castonia. Um, or they bought it from Sonya last year, I think, you know, we're.
And that's the one that's down out at Knox?
Oh, no, that is the second to newest one that's down right now, but the newest one goes down every other week too.
But they're probably out of warranty.
Uh, the newest one was still, last time we fixed it last week, it was still covered in warranty. The old one or the older one that's at John Deere right now is out of warranty.
Really?
Yes.
So they're still putting you behind.
Yes, it is. Yeah, right now I only have three movers out, so, um, I don't remember, I just, yeah. John, Mouse, Amber, it's three movers out.
So there's five total then?
So we tried to get six this year and. Equipment has. Not.
I understand.
Allowed us to keep going.
I talked to Don Deere, um. Where's it, a lot?
I think that, yeah.
They were weeks out because they're doing combines now. We called, they're all put on here. They were pushing me, but. Oh, they can hurry up, get me in.
You know, it's, you know, I mean, the last new tractor I bought had a five year warranty.
So is that something that you could probably make as a deal down there?
I don't know, I, but I, I, it's not my, it's not my job. But. When we bought John Deere equipment, we not only got a municipal discount. But by golly, they stood behind that stuff.
So since you're not. Was there warranty on? Maybe they're on the new.
Yes, so the, so far, for most, I would say about seventy five percent of the stuff. Under warranty. But it's just going down every other week and we have to haul it there, we gotta haul it back.
Was it a five year?
I don't, I'm not.
What year is that, what year is that tractor?
Um, all I know is they purchased it last year.
Oh.
But I didn't really look at the specs of it.
And then the one that's down, it's not under warranty. How old is that one? Yeah, nineteen, I'm worried of this. That's, that's, that'd be five years probably, if, if, if it wasn't five years.
No, none of them came from this John Deere.
That was all. That's down, come from. Ohio.
Really?
No, that, um, the one, the tractor that's down right now, well, we're not sure, but that one came from Ohio in twenty nineteen.
So what are you saying, Bruce? You want, you want me to call John Deere and, and, I mean, we didn't buy from them.
Do you mind if I just walk in out there and say, how come you guys are screwing us around? Would you mind? Okay, thank you.
They told us, um, I think it was before Brock called them, but they told us they couldn't get till it till like August fifth.
I'll ask them.
No, because every, every day it's putting her that far behind.
And it's only like Monday, Tuesday, next week now.
Yeah, it's been down, they had it since last week.
Now, it's the one that's out of warranty.
Yes.
So in regards to our own, our own mechanic can't fix it?
I thought it was. That's what they told me. They, it's an issue with the transmission? Yeah, that's what.
Okay, I understand. It takes a special technology.
All right, so the commissioners have decided to have them look for a used one till we bring us more on here.
Maybe we wouldn't get the whole of it.
As far as. And then you have more equipment.
But you got time, you said you can't get this.
You guys have any, any other business?
I had a quick question unrelated to today's topic. Um, because I had that asked around. Of folks that are working on the. The tax, the task force that's reevaluating now taxes. Oh, that'll come up next, next year. Are, are we? Do, is there any stomach for looking at, uh? Implementing or changing lit? To. Support the hospital, um, basically implementing, what was it done in? How old act eleven twenty one last year or earlier this year?
We have to, we have to look at it. By the way, the only, the only thing I say is if we're gonna. Do anything with a little bit cap. We're gonna have to take it away from someplace else.
That's true.
Because I'm not going to raise any taxes.
No. So I'll just, I'll just answer back that right now for us.
We still.
Well, that's just me talking. I know.
I, I don't know. I think it says this, most people don't like to raise taxes. I mean. I think it's, it's one of those things where sometimes you have patient things and sometimes you don't, but.
There's ways you can, you can change it around.
Yeah, yeah, this would, this doesn't necessarily mean an increase, it just mean, it could just be a reallocation.
Yeah, because if you do the public safety thing, you can, you can switch it all around to LOIT. I mean, there's different ways to move it. Someplace else.
Cause there were. I mean, in the last three years, there might have been significant additions to what you can do with lit.
Mixed cap.
And this, this. I just, I just wanted to bring it up.
And it would save any interest on the part of the council or looking into it.
Take care of all safety issues. Who wants to do it?
I mean, addition.
Wants us to change it?
Nobody.
Nobody, okay.
Wants to change it. This is, um. This is just. Yeah, from. Uh. Yeah. Cause they're, they're putting together some. Discussions about, because it's gonna be on the agenda for the state legislature next year. Oh, again, tax, taxes and road funding is a significant portion of what next on your session. Our first one started on all of the two.
You know, Todd? Yes, I, I. I, I do want to bring something up because I want to be able to tell people, people accurately. The. Repair the roads in the Samper North Hudson area due to the. Solar obstruction. That is due to start being fixed in spring of twenty five, right?
Probably more towards summer of twenty five.
Okay, summer of twenty five. And now are we doing that paving ourselves or Reese Riley coming in or their?
They will hire their own contractor, so next year will hire their own contractor.
Okay.
Or it could be re- re-.
I, I, I understand, but it's not gonna be us, it's gonna be, they're going to.
Then the company will come in, do it, they'll bond it, they'll.
Okay. Okay, and you guys, you'll oversee their work? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I mean, that's something that's, that's very important to me is, uh, we get them people's roads fixed for them. Yeah, so there's no sense fixing them till they're done, till it's. We did.
Like even if they asked a contractor to come out there and obfuscate or whatever they want to do to it. Hold makes it. I doubt they would come out and warranty it at all because there's still a lot of heavy truck traffic, so they're not gonna come out there and do it and then say, okay, we'll guarantee it, but.
And it will be put back the same quality, if not better than where.
It'll be better.
There's no way you could put it back the same way.
No.
Okay, okay, well, I want to be able to answer that actively.
They're probably, I guess, in the four maybe, I have a Paser rating and they're gonna be a ten.
Okay. And you said summer of twenty five.
Yeah, I don't think it's supposed to start till summer of twenty five.
This new paper that we're gonna get, I can, I'll be able to drive my tractor down the road without. Losing my faulty again.
Did you give it time to set?
Yeah, depending on what road you're on too.
All right, anybody else? Of council, I have anything?
I, uh.
Dave, you got anything?
I asked Jay, uh, VS.
Uh, no, sir.
I'm gonna make that presentation on.
That?
Solar compliance stuff.
All right, with, um, with that being, we're all done, I'd like to accept the motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make it.
Have a motion from Tony and a second by.
I'll second it.
Okay? All in favor?
I.
All right, motion carried.
Just tell it stop, you need to slow down.
We do. People on the.
Yeah, could you?
We won't wait two weeks.
Hey, Ron, I really hope you didn't agree.
No, I'm, I'm.
I wonder, what are you guys doing? Right now. I can. I guess I. See, so, hey, now, don't get something. I don't know. Oh.
That you guys, I know, I believe that you. Just saying, we knew. Thank you, Mitch, I truly appreciate it.
Something, you know. All these get wasted.
Those things have, uh.
They're all of them. Off the brush. Chip brush. First to do everything I hired by. That would help me over. All the ways. But I. Things can yell and yell and catch a plane of violence. Start crashing.
See, old timer.